Good afternoon and welcome to the forty-sixth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. And if you're appearing today, please come forward, introduce yourself and your client, and spell your names for our commission reporter. And if you're here to testify on any matter, please come forward. I'll be sworn in by Mr. Picaro. And introduce yourself and spell your name. So commissioners, I see we have some minutes.
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve the June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Sorry. Motion to approve the regular.
So executive session?
Yeah. Motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the thirty-ninth meeting and the regular minutes of the forty-first meeting as previously circulated.
Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The regular and executive session minutes of the thirty-ninth meeting and the regular minutes of the forty-first meeting are approved as circulated. Moving into the public hearing, calling agenda item number one, application number one-nine dash one-five-seven-six-eight from Koa Waikiki LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Suzuka, on behalf of the applicant. I apologize.
How did you get your last name?
S U Z U K A. I'm also an authorized agent. And I apologize, but for some reason, my client is not here. Would it be okay to proceed or should we?
Yeah. Yeah. You've already gone through.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Not a problem. Thank you. Mr. Picaro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters in support. Applicant admits statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Motion to approve agenda item one, application number one-nine dash one-five-seven-six-eight.
Second. Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, application number one-nine dash one-five-seven-six-eight is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number two, application number one-nine dash one-six-zero-one-eight from Makino's Hawaii LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Suzuka, on behalf of the applicant. Next to me is Masako Ishitsuka. Let me spell that. M A S A K O I S H I T S U K A. She's the manager of the restaurant. They've been operating under a temporary license.
Temporary license. Thank you very much. Mr. Picaro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters in support. Applicant admits statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Just one question. How's everything going with the temporary license?
Seems to be, they've been operating since May seventeenth, and they have had no issues or problems.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to approve agenda item two, application number one-nine dash one-six-zero-one-eight.
Second. Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application number one-nine dash one-six-zero-one-eight is approved. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Moving into the special license applications, agenda item number three, application number one-nine dash one-six-five-three-six from Bamboo Catering Inc.
Good afternoon. David Webb, W E B B, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for our graduation party? It still comes, sir.
Before we get, before we begin, can I make a request of the commission?
Um, yes.
Okay. I notice on the agenda that Bamboo Catering is, or agenda items three, four, five, six, and seven.
Correct.
And then again on nine, ten, and eleven. I was wondering if we could do it all at one shot.
What's your pleasure, commissioners? I think that's.
Yeah.
I'm gonna accommodate that, and I'll move you right out of here. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Questions or type of action on agenda item number three?
Motion to approve special license application, application number one-nine dash one-six-five-three-six.
Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number one-nine dash one-six-five-three-six is approved. Calling agenda item number four, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-six-one from Bamboo Catering. Please introduce yourself again.
Yes, David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve special license application number one-nine dash one-six-six-six-one.
Second. Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-six-one is approved. Calling agenda item number five, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-six-two from Bamboo Catering Inc. Mr. Webb, every time you have to.
Yes, sir.
For the record, please.
David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve special license application, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-six-two.
Second. Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-six-two is approved. Calling agenda item number six, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-six-three from Bamboo Catering Inc.
David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve special license application number one-nine dash one-six-six-six-three.
Second. Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number six, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-six-three is approved. Calling agenda item number seven, application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-two from Bamboo Catering Inc. Commissioner?
David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
Moving faster. Commissioner?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
This is a little different from your other graduation parties. The next martial arts fight, is there gonna be actual fight going on?
Yes.
And is there gonna be a ring or something?
Yes, it's inside the ballroom. It's on the day before, it's not on a Saturday or Friday or Saturday. It's the day before the Fourth of July. It's a Wednesday night. It's kind of planned sort of last minute, so we don't expect a large crowd.
And where will that fighting take place?
At the Filipino community center.
Inside, in the meeting room?
No, they put a ring right in the ballroom, right in the middle of the ballroom.
Okay, so that's this meeting room area.
Well, no, it's the ballroom. There's a meeting room on the other side. Do you have the map?
Well, we have open courtyard and a.
Yeah. There's an open courtyard. Yeah, it's the ballroom, actually. It says meeting room on it, but it's a big, huge ballroom.
On the way.
When you walk in, it's on the way. Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Webb, you've held these events here before, right?
Yes, sir. Any times.
Any issues?
No, sir. No issues.
And in the past experience, have you worked with two or more special duty HPD officers? Or has it always been about two?
I have. I've had as many as three. And my agreement with this gentleman, because there is a promoter for this, his name is Mike Miller, was that he was going to, we were gonna touch bases about two weeks out, or just coming up soon. So we see where ticket sales are at. Because they also sell tickets at the door. And if it looks like we're gonna have more than what he has, then he has to pay for an additional officer. Right now, we only have, I'm only gonna order two. If ticket sales are gonna be more, then we're gonna get three officers.
More than what, one-fifty?
More than one-fifty, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And what is the occupancy of the ballroom?
The ballroom actually holds, if you set it like for a, you know, theater style, for church services or something, three-hundred-and-eighty people. But when you put a ring in there, it takes up a good part of the ballroom, so you probably could get another two-hundred chairs in there. But there's still overflow out in the courtyard. So I've seen as many as three-hundred people there, but we don't like to have that many people there. It causes a huge parking problem with the YMCA next door. They don't like that.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to approve special license application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-two.
Second. Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-two is approved. Turn the page. Okay, let's go to agenda item number nine. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-four from Bamboo Catering Inc.
David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Football fundraiser.
Yes, it's Bryson Carvalho. He's gonna do a big fundraiser there and try to raise some money for the Wepal football.
Oh, very good. Motion to approve special license application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-four.
Second. Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-four is approved. Calling agenda item number ten, application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-five from Bamboo Catering Inc.
David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve special license application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-five.
Second. Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number ten, application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-five is approved. Calling agenda item number eleven. Is this the last one?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-six from Bamboo Catering Inc.
David Webb, authorized agent Bamboo Catering.
Motion to approve special license application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-six.
Second. Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eleven, application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-six is approved. Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you.
Let's go back to agenda item number eight. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. This is a special license application. Application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-three dash one through one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-three dash twenty from HSI Honolulu Joint Ventures, inclusive.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the commission. Robert Uwioka on behalf of HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company. Presenting to my right is Chris Wong. She is a senior director of operations. First name C H R I S, last name W O N G. At this time, we have nothing to add to the investigator's report. This is for the Honolulu International Airport for the beer kiosk.
Hopefully it'll be electricity.
Had some excitement yesterday.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve special license application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-three dash one through one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-three dash twenty, inclusive.
Second. Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eight, applications number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-three dash one through one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-three dash twenty, inclusive, are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Number twelve. Thank you very much. Okay, this is agenda item number twelve, applications number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-eight dash one through one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-eight dash twenty from HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company.
Robert Uwioka on behalf of HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company. Presenting to my right is Chris Wong. She's a senior director of operations. At this time, we have nothing to add to the investigator's report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve special license application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-eight dash one through one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-eight dash twenty, inclusive.
Second. Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twelve, application number one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-eight dash one through one-nine dash one-six-seven-nine-eight dash twenty, inclusive, are approved.
Thank you so much.
Going to agenda item thirteen, is that correct?
Yes.
All those in favor? Thank you. Calling transfer application number one-nine dash one-five-six-three-eight from Two-Eight-Eight-Five-DH Management LLC, DBA Lotus Honolulu at Diamond Head. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Chair Lee, on behalf of the applicant, to my right is Vikram Garg, who is the manager of the applicant LLC. I reviewed the investigator's report, and, you know, it appears the primary concern of the investigator is whether the applicant that's seeking to hold license has the requisite possession and control of the licensed premises named the hotel. And so I would like to hand the commissioners out to section three point one point one of the management agreement, the hotel management agreement dated January one, two thousand nineteen. And that provision states that the owner hereby grants the operator, operator being the applicant in this case, the sole and exclusive right to manage and operate the hotel pursuant to the terms of this agreement. So, you know, I was involved in drafting this management agreement, and I recognize that this commission is concerned about the licensee having, you know, the required exclusive control over the licensed premises, and particularly the liquor business. And so that is specifically why I drafted the management agreement in this fashion. So.
Do you have a copy of the management agreement?
It was submitted with the application.
Do we have a copy?
I don't have.
Oh, sorry, we don't have it.
I don't have it. One second.
Was it in my book? Okay.
I'm sorry you're being interrupted.
No. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't bring extra copy, because I saw that it was submitted with the application package. The other point, though, I would make while Daniel's looking for the management agreement is, even though, you know, we have this Two-Eight-Eight-Five-DH Management LLC as the manager or operator, and then you have Two-Eight-Eight-Five-DH LLC that owns the hotel. These two entities are brother-sister entities, because they're controlled by the McNaughton family. So they just created these two separate entities for limited liability purposes, like a lot of, you know, these hotel owners do. But the ultimate control of both entities rests with the McNaughton family. And so, you know, I think the management agreement's enough, but to the extent the commission may still have reservations, you know, in many other instances where I've appeared before you, where we've had this type of division of the license with the hotel ownership, you know, we've always had this affiliated common control ownership, so that ultimately, control of the premises rests with the same warm body that's making all the decisions.
I think there's another concern. I share your view of the investigator's report, Mr. Lee, that that is one concern raised by the investigator. But the other concern addresses whether or not, if we can look at the last page by whether the transfer lease expired upon the effective date of the first temporary license, which was December thirty-one of last year. I don't know if you can address that as well.
Sure. So, you know, we submitted the applications for the transfer and the temporary back in November of last year. And then since then, you know, the deal was still in escrow. It hadn't closed yet. And the parties, for a variety of reasons, because they were eliminating the leasehold, the sandwich lease position, because the McNaughtons were acquiring the hotel in fee. And prior to that, Diamond Head Management, which was effectively, you know, the Aston folks, they controlled the hotel through a leasehold position, and they held the license. So because the McNaughtons were acquiring the hotel in fee, they amended that lease so that it would terminate on or about December fifteenth. And then they actually closed on the acquisition on December thirty-first. So the investigator's correct. Under the statute, at that moment in time, Diamond Head Management should have surrendered the liquor license, not for cancellation, because it was gonna be transferred, but rather for safekeeping by the commission, and they failed to do that. That, admittedly, that's a violation.
Yeah, and so I'll just express my concern is, if we were to approve today, and this is preliminary, I'm inclined to not approve it. But because it's preliminary, I think it might make sense that we move it over to the public hearing, and we have a more fuller commission making that decision further. And I would respectfully request that you be prepared to respond as you just did. Happy. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions?
Do you want to see the management agreement paper now, or are you?
I think we could. I'm okay with the representation, especially with the control of the McNaughton family under two entities, and there's some of the way to that. So thank you for representing that.
I agree. Motion to approve application number thirteen, transfer application number one-nine dash one-five-six-three-eight.
Second. Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirteen, transfer application number one-nine dash one-five-six-three-eight is approved, with the understanding, Mr. Lee, that you will have more information for the public hearing as far as clearing out the issues that the commission has. Okay?
Yes.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Let's go to agenda item number fourteen, transfer application number one-nine dash one-six-one-eight-six from Ming Dynasty Fish and Shrimp Company. Mr. Luke?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Tomorrow night is the general manager, Lin Yan Min. The spelling has been provided. Two things. One change to the liquor investigator's report, there is parking in the cultural plaza. It states that there's no parking, but it's part of the Chinese cultural plaza, and there is parking there. And the second is that they are under a temporary license for the last two weeks. No problems.
Very good. Mr. Sato, would you have a fight to open on anything?
Oh, sorry.
On what? Mr. Luke just referenced the chief licensing supervisor.
While they're confronting, where's the location of this premises? Is it on the, closer to the river?
The river.
Okay, and it is part of the cultural plaza.
Yeah, it is.
Clarified for the record, the representation made by Mr. Luke is accurate.
Supervising investigator, Daniel Sato. Sorry, I wasn't here for the last thing.
I just stated that there is, for this application, there is parking in the cultural plaza. They're far in the cultural plaza.
Yes, there is parking.
And the second part of that representation?
Well, they have been under a temporary license.
They have been working on it.
For the last two weeks.
Is that right?
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve transfer application number one-nine dash one-six-one-eight-six.
Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fourteen, transfer application number one-nine dash one-six-one-eight-six is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number fifteen, application number one-nine dash one-six-three-six-four from IES Retail.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Suzuka, on behalf of IES Retail, DBA AMA. The applicant to my right is Sandra Hugh, S A N D R A H I U. Sandra Hugh, she's the retail operations manager for the applicant. Thank you very much for the investigative report. We reviewed it, and I tried to call the investigator, Mr. Tamapua, to clarify some things in the report, and I wasn't able to reach him. So I did want to raise some questions, issues in the report.
Please proceed.
One is, we can't find Keala Kalu La Hu Street on Google Map or on the city records or anyplace else. It doesn't seem to exist as far as we can tell. And so I'm not sure where that street name came from. In. Oh, it appears in the caption of the report, and then various places where we're talking about the details of the premises, the location of the premises.
Can I pause you there? Is the address accurate? Four-eight-four Comenkila Boulevard?
Yes. Four-eight-four Comenkila Boulevard. So, you know, where it's talking about the intersection of two, we couldn't find that street. And so maybe it exists, but anyway, that was one issue. A related issue is that the map that's attached to the investigator's report actually shows the wrong location of all premises in online. And so if it's okay, I could give you what I think.
Yeah, that'd be great. If you have updates.
Yeah. Well, we just kind of marked it on.
Marked the correct location.
A Google, Google map. Where we. It's a few lots down. You can see the asterisk is where we think it is. The marker is where it's located on the investigator's report. So again, the address is correct, but, you know, this impacts various things, including the location of the church, which is noted as a hundred seventy-something feet away. We're not sure if that is accurate, if the location is in the wrong place or not.
We appreciate you coming forward with this issues that you raised here, but let me point to the investigator's report.
Yes.
That you met the statutory requirements.
Yes.
So where it goes from there, as far as, some of that area is not built out.
Right.
This is, in the back is the old ammo bunkers.
It's not the areas.
Four-hour range. Am I in the right area? Behind.
Sure, if you're familiar with the Wendy's in Kapole.
Yes.
It is across the street from the Wendy's.
Across the street from the Wendy's. Okay.
So, is the premises built out?
It's under construction right now.
Maybe it would be helpful, just so we have a clear record, if we move you forward to the public hearing, if you can submit maybe photographs, street views, and we'll know for the record that the exhibit attached is incorrect based on Mr. Suzuka's representations. And I also request, maybe if you can give us a T M P number, so there's more certainty. It might be redundant with the address, street address, but just so we have a clear.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to verify as well that the maps that were submitted, you know, the radius maps, they reflected the location that you pointed out on the revised map.
That the asterisk is four-eight-four Comenkila.
Just one other point. We're trying to figure out where Maoka and Makai, throughout the report, it sort of says the front entrance is Diamond Head, or the refrigerator, walk-in refrigerator's on the Maoka side or the Y-Night side. And when the term Maoka and Makai were used, especially in this area, Makai is kind of in the.
Whole coast.
Yeah, so we're not saying it's wrong, but we're just saying that, you know.
Oh, come on, brother. The mountains go all the way to one side, but the kilo in the water is the other side. Turn to your right, you look at that Diamond Head, the other side, lovely downtown Y-Night.
So the flip plan is correct. So, you know, it's correct. But, yeah, just wanted to point that out.
I think if you follow the request of Commissioner Miraschera and the comment from Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
And provide that information, then we shouldn't have any issues.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Okay. Commissioners?
Motion to approve agenda item fifteen, application number one-nine dash one-six-three-six-four.
Move in second. All those in favor? Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifteen, application number one nine dash one six three six four is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number sixteen, application number one nine dash one six four eight nine from Budori Market Corporation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Min Yang Wu on behalf of Budori Market Corporation.
Your client?
My client couldn't make it today.
Your authorization?
Yes.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I have a question and I hope you can answer in the absence of your client, but under the personal history and the data, there doesn't seem to be any work experience in any industry, much less alcohol liquor.
She she doesn't have a whole lot of experience at all, so I asked the same question, I do have concerns about it. And she's planning to hire a manager who is more experienced, it's certainly possible.
Okay, that'll be very helpful, especially if she's not familiar with the rules and regulations.
And I also will do my best to educate her to the extent I can.
Thank you.
It would be great if she makes an appearance for for the public hearings.
Motion to approve agenda item sixteen, application number one nine dash one six four eight nine.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number sixteen, application number one nine dash one six four eight nine is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seventeen, a temporary license application, application number one nine dash one six five three three from Pacific Gray D B A Sunny's Market.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Min Yang Wu on behalf of Pacific Gray Inc. On my right is Sharon Gray, she is your president. No questions, Mrs. Shiro.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve agenda item seventeen, application number one nine dash one six five three three.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number seventeen, application number one nine dash one six five three three is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eighteen, application number one nine dash one six eight three three from Sodexo America LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Patrick Baugh, B A U G H, authorized agent, general manager of Sodexo LLC.
This is at the Y K T show, correct?
Correct.
Commissioners, you have a question?
Thank you for the map. I think if you could kind of go over with us, you're gonna have a two-year period.
Okay, so, working on recommendations from you guys and working with the, you know, what we're trying to do. So, that whole area, actually, the pool is twenty-one and over, the two-thirds sections that you see within that area is all twenty-one and over. And then the grass section above is twenty-one and over, we're going to barricade off, the pool is already fenced off, we're gonna barricade off pretty much straight up that line to the back fence and we're limiting everybody under twenty-one to the ocean entrance side and twenty-one and over to that section. And trying to really keep, you know, instead of having mixed seating and everything else like that. So, this curb motor was very responsive with us and helped us design, you know, seating available to that and stuff. So, we're posting, we're kind of really trying to cut it off so that no one under twenty-one is going to that Diamond Head side.
I just want to make one comment, you started off by saying you noted our recommendations, we do make suggestions, but I just want to make sure you don't rely on this commission to do your business plan, to make sure that you provide a safe function. That burden is on you as the applicant and licensee, so.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, I'm not offended by that, I just want to make sure that you are aware that you cannot rely on what we say and what we suggest and you do have to do your diligence and homework, make sure that you provide a safe function.
No, and I I completely understand that, you know.
The recommendation from this commission would have been for you to work with the administration.
No, and I understand, and I'm not saying that, we we each show is gonna be different, to be honest with you, this is the first attempt at this setup and, you know, we're gonna go with it and see how it works and every show will be different.
And I will also say, I appreciate the detail of your report, the security plan, etc., that's all.
Oh, I just want to ask my standard question that I've been asking for since I've been on this commission, so do you have any canines?
I do not believe that they were requested.
So, the people in that area are gonna get smoked out?
Well, we we are, as I've stated before, after our past, we we are limiting no smoking to that area that have signs, if you noticed in my report that I, we are printing up signs and putting signs in that area and stuff like that. So, when we see it, they will be escorted out of the area and out of the premise. We're gonna be more vigilant, I'll be.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear.
Motion to approve agenda item number eighteen, application number one nine dash one six eight three three.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eighteen, application number one nine dash one six eight three three is approved. Good luck now, a lot of people, eh, four thousand a day?
Their sales are not as robust, but I make the plans based on.
Yeah, right, understood, thank you. Calling agenda item number nineteen, request number one nine dash one five nine four seven from Nine Three Nine Entertainment LLC.
Good afternoon, Stuart Shirasu, S H I R A S U. The request was pushed to this week so I could provide you with better map, I guess, of a floor plan. I present this to you.
Correct. I believe our other requests may have been to further discussions with our investigator, has that they can face as well?
I'm sorry?
I I believe one of our other requests was for you to work with our investigator on it as well, has that they can face?
Well, his his issue with the structure, I guess his concern was that the office space appears to have an entry exit into the licensed area via the spiral stairwell.
Correct.
As you see on the map there, the wall that we're creating blocks off any access at all to the licensed premise. Where, I guess this will be on second page, that proposed wall there you see in highlight would block off from the spiral staircase. And on the first floor, which is page one, the proposed wall would block off any exit or entrance to the licensed area as well. So, it'd be completely separated.
So, if we start on the, and thank you for giving us the updated drawing. If we start on the first floor of the exhibit you provided, the commission?
Yes.
Entry exit to the second floor is only gonna be from the outside, not from the inside of the licensed premises?
Correct, correct. Through that second, through that side door.
And that first floor proposed wall, that's a permanent wall that cannot be used for ingress or egress?
Correct.
And same question for the second page of the new exhibit, the proposed wall is gonna be a permanent structure so that there's no ingress or egress?
Correct.
How do currently, how do you exit the facility and is that wall you're closing up?
Are you talking about the current floor plan?
Correct, 'cause I mean, you're closing up a wall which looks like blocks access to this other floor.
There are actually three exits in the building, the front entrance, which is on Kamoku, if you look on the first floor, is kind of.
That's the double doors up, right?
Double doors, yes, and then there's a back door in the kitchen, which would be on the bottom corner here. And then the third fire door, which we are gonna be blocking off, so we'll still have two exits from the current business.
Just to clarify, is any portion of the second floor gonna be part of the licensed premises or this?
Yes, yes.
Which part?
Through the stairwell.
Is it the smaller portion here?
No, not that portion.
The bigger portion?
Basically, the second floor carve-out where the spiral staircase goes will still be licensed area. But the proposed wall will block it off from the rest of the second floor.
Okay. Show me again where you're pointing to.
The spiral staircase
Okay.
From the first floor to the second floor goes into a small rectangular area that will be licensed.
What is the purpose of that space?
That's a locker room.
And that's gonna be walled off from any other portion of the second floor?
The proposed wall will block it off from the unlicensed space there completely.
What am I looking at on the right, is that overview of the first floor?
That's just, yes, there's nothing there.
Thank you.
So, there's a, there's currently locker rooms upstairs?
Yes, locker room. Up there used to be the E C units, which we took out, just the venting and all that.
And where was that located?
Where he was asking about what's all this up here, that was our E C units and things.
Motion to continue.
Before we do that, Commissioner, can we have a supervising, licensing supervisor, yeah, share his.
Supervising investigator, Daniel Sato.
So, if you had the opportunity to review the revised floor plans?
Yep, and it appears that it would be definitely separated, so there wouldn't be an issue regarding that rule.
Commissioners, do you have any question, questions?
Yes, just to second. Yes, to be clear, so in the original licensing report of May fourteen, the concern was that there would be entrance, ingress, egress from licensed premises to unlicensed premises, right? And that concern, as I understand your testimony, is that it's no longer an issue if the proposal that the licensee is making includes the permanent walls?
Correct, and the the concern was the manager's office would still be accessible to that separate locker room area. But based on the new drawing and based on his representation, it's gonna be completely walled off, so then there will be a clear, you know, separation between the two spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, my last, one one question, Mr. Sato. So, if the commission was inclined to approve this, before he picked up his license, you would go out, your investigators would go out and inspect the premises?
There there will be a final inspection.
There will be a final inspection, okay, can we go into executive session, please?
Yes, Chair, motion to continue the executive session.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, we are back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions of the applicant or a type of action?
Yes, Chair, motion to approve, request number one nine dash one five nine four seven.
They're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, request number one nine dash one five nine four seven is approved. Thank you, Mr. Shiro. Calling agenda item number twenty, request number one nine dash one six eight three one from L G Corp, D B A Chris's Liquor and Grocery, Mr. Lu.
I'd like to refer Wayne Luke as counsel, please withdraw these requests.
Commissioners?
Motion to withdraw request, agenda item number twenty, request number one nine dash one six eight three one.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty, request number one nine dash one six eight three one is withdrawn. Okay, so, calling agenda item number twenty-one, request number one nine dash one six eight six four, Mr. Kiuchi.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the applicant.
Chair, I'll disclose a conflict of interest and given that we can't meet the forum in light of my recusal, I would suggest we move to continue this matter, which I can't do on its non-subjective.
I I would agree and I would ask it be continued to next week.
To on next, we don't have a.
You don't have a.
Next available?
To the next.
Next available, well.
Yeah, next available.
Yeah, next available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, Commissioner, how many do you have, Mr. Kiuchi?
I have twenty-four and twenty-seven on the adjudication calendar, Ms. Neely is gonna continue that.
Twenty-four you have.
And twenty-seven, but Ms. Neely will continue that.
Let's take a law so we can get you.
Okay, that's fine.
We can, actually, let's do twenty-one, a motion to continue, agenda item number twenty-one, to the next available, okay?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-one is continued to the next available.
And a twenty-four and twenty-seven.
Okay, twenty-four, good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Joy Neely, Deputy Corporation Counsel, appearing for the prosecution for today's adjudication.
Thank you very much, calling agenda item number twenty-four, Plus One Inc.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. For the same reason I would ask this matter be continued to July eleventh.
And Chair, for the record, I should disclose a conflict of interest, I am able to act on a motion to continue the matter because it's non-subjective.
And I agree.
Ms. Neely, would you state for the record your position, please?
I have no objection to a continuance.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
And I'll make the motion, motion to continue, agenda item number twenty-four to next available.
Second.
Actually.
This one is specifically July eleven because I have several matters in July eleven.
Very good.
Let me renew my motion, the motion to continue, agenda item twenty-four to July eleven, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-four is continued to July eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Calling agenda item number twenty-seven, Mojo Sports Bar and Grill.
Again, good afternoon, again, Mr. Chairman of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee.
Chair, disclose for the record, I have a conflict of interest with this matter, but I am able to vote on a motion to continue the matter.
And I I agree with that.
Ms. Neely?
I have no objection to a continuance, again, to July eleven.
July eleven.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Motion to continue, agenda item twenty-seven to July eleven, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-seven is continued to July eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, thank you, Mr. Kiuchi. Where are we going, yeah? What number?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay, very good. Okay, calling agenda item number twenty-two, Trade Win's Lounge, Mr. Lu.
Yes, and I'd like to refer Wayne Luke as counsel, could I have this continued to July eleventh, most of a good date?
Uh, for what reason?
The agent, they switched, Japan has switched agents and I'm waiting to see who's gonna be the new agent, so I can deal with it.
Okay. You have any?
I have no objection.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to continue, agenda twenty-two to July eleven, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-two is continued to July eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Calling agenda item, item number twenty-three, Ever Pantry.
Danny Huang, H W A N T, for Ever Pantry.
Thank you.
The charge is on or about October eighteenth, twenty eighteen, licensee failed to make available for inspection and or auditing within the city and county of Honolulu its books and records for the last four years indicating all income purchases, expenses, and employee time records of licensee's liquor business in violation of Rule three eighty-one seventeen point fifty-four D of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Mr. Huang, how do you wish to do?
I plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-three.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-three, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first violation, I recommend a fine, oh, of five hundred dollars.
Mr. Huang, do you have any explanation or comment on the? Mr. Huang, do you have any explanation or comment on the?
Yes, I would like to, um, ask the commission to waive the penalty, because, um, from the very beginning, we operated with, uh, commission auditors. Um, we provided them with whatever documents we had, and I also asked my C P A's office to, um, provide whatever documents they had and, um, provide the liquor commission auditors complete access to all the books we had, and also to prevent this kind of issues from taking place in the future. Um, we have spent almost nine thousand dollars on a new P O S system, which will hold records of all the transactions electronically, so we can, they can be accessed at any given time, any time the liquor commission wants, any kind of record, it'll be there. You know, um, how many of beer, or what type of wine, or, you know, everything will be there. And every month, we, um, emailed it to the C P A's office, so it'll be at the C P A's office as well as within the P O S system that, uh, we got in place as of October last year. So, we've worked hard to prevent this kind of stuff from happening in the future, and we can, um, be completely transparent, uh, about the sales transactions and everything. So for those reasons, I would like to ask, uh, the commission to kindly waive, um, the penalty.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Um, can we hear from the auditor, please?
San Bonfilar Liquor Commission, our auditor. Bella? Bonfilar.
Fila.
Bonfilar.
I'm sorry. So, um, you heard the licensee's, um, comments in terms of cooperating with the commission, can you respond to that?
Okay, um, basically, um, when I got there, he just bought, um, P O S system, but the audit period is before that, that he never, um, kept the source document like Z take. He had, um, bank statements, but it's not enough, we, we required, um, the licensees to keep the source document like, like Z take.
He said the source documents?
Uh-huh, he didn't have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Neely, do you have any further comments?
Um, I, I think it was a, well, it was a previous commission decision ordered that licensee, um, purchase of P O S system to keep better track of his records in response to a previous audit. Um, and, uh, he did so, but as of the date of this audit in October of twenty eighteen, the system was still not sitting operational.
Do you have a reference date for the data that, um, prior to commission request for the system?
Um, the D N O was served on February twenty eighteen?
February twenty eighteen.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Okay, um, my motion's gonna be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-three.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-three, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-four?
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Uh, sorry, we did twenty-four, thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-five, Star Sports Bar. We did twenty-seven, correct?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Commissioner, and, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Robert P., C P A, and also authorized agent for Star Sports Bar.
The charges honor during the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to accurately report its revenues from gross liquor sales or to properly complete the gross liquor sales report in violation of Rule three eighty-one seventeen point fifty-six of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Ms. Lee, how do you wish to plead?
Yeah, my client said, uh, they were pleaded, they closed the business.
Okay, um, motion?
I think the owner is closed.
Hold on a second, let me move to, um, accept the plea. Um, motion to accept the plea for agenda item twenty-five?
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-three, um, the violation is accepted.
Um, this is a second violation, um, the first, the last one happened in, on June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, as such, I recommend a fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, Ms. Lee, um, you can now explain or what you're gonna comment on later?
Um, the owner is perfect, and she was unable to continue the business, so they closed their business as of December thirty-one last year, so, uh, we cancel the licensee. Uh, if, if, uh, we can reduce the penalty, hopefully.
So let me ask this question, so they're totally out of business?
Yes.
And they're totally closed?
Totally closed.
Thank you.
Um, motion to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item twenty-five?
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-five, a letter of reprimand will be issued. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee. Calling, uh, agenda item number twenty-six, Scarlet Honolulu L L C.
Um, licensee contacted me that he was having a medical emergency and requested a continuance to, uh, July, or June twenty-seventh, I have no objection.
Motion to continue, agenda item twenty-six to June twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-six is continued to June twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Calling agenda item number twenty-eight, Kukui Meat Market.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Minya, we want to have Kukui Meat Market, Inc. On my right is the President Jonathan Lee.
Jonathan what?
Lee.
Lee.
L E B.
Thank you.
The charges honor during the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to accurately report its revenues from gross liquor sales or to properly complete the gross liquor sales report in violation of Rule three eighty-one seventeen point fifty-six of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Ms. Wu, how's your client wish to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-eight?
Second?
They're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, uh, agenda item number twenty-eight, that's right?
Correct.
Uh, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first violation, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Ms. Wu, um, any comment on the violation?
Um, the, the people, they, they also not only selling the, uh, liquors, they also sell general, um, grocery products too. So, in their invoices, there is no, um, distinction other than the name of the product, but, um, and that, that's why they're having a hard time distinguish that, the liquor sales and general grocery merchandise sales. But after they learned that, um, during the violation, um, he had a, uh, uh, some learning, uh, session with the, uh, liquor commission, and after that, um, now they are separately inputting the items with the liquor and, uh, best of the general, uh, product. And also, um, they used to be, um, they were doing liquid keeping for several months at a time, but now they're doing monthly, so making a effort.
Okay, so, um, going forward, this will not be an issue in terms of the two items being commingled?
Uh, because the, um, his client, when they order items, they order liquor from, um, wholesale, and also they order other merchandise to, together. So in the invoices, it was only there in one invoice to make it paid, but right now, they make separate sections.
Okay, and so make sure going forward, it'll stay separate in terms of liquor and grocery items?
Yes.
Okay. Um, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-eight?
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-eight, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-nine, Applebee's?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Ramona Hink, R A M O N A, H I N C K, and to the right of me is Joanne Jav, Javsek, uh, J O A N N E, D R A B, C Z Y K.
D R A E, what, I missed it?
D R A B.
P.
C Z Y K.
C Z Y, okay.
The charges honor about November first, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee underreported gross liquor sales and failed to pay the additional license fee payment of ten dollars eighty-eight cents in violation of Rule three eighty-one seventeen point fifty-seven of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Any wish to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-nine?
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-nine, the no contest plea is accepted.
Can we explain? This is, I'll just bring the penalty back.
Yes, ma'am.
There you can, but wait, wait, sir.
Uh, this is a first violation, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Okay, now's your chance to explain.
Okay, um, Joanne, can you explain what happened?
Okay.
I'm newly appointed.
She just started, um?
June fourth.
June fourth.
CFO.
As a CFO, so we had another CFO, um, who we let go, may of two thousand and eighteen, so there was nobody but me there. I'm the bookkeeper, so I had to do this, I didn't know what I was doing. So they hired another controller in about August, so I guess they sent her a notice, she was now checking the mail, and we found out she wasn't doing her job either, we let her go. So she was gone in January. So, Pandy, from the Liquor Commission, emailed me, because I was emailing her, I was asking her how to do it fr- from July, and, um, she said, oh, you folks didn't do the tax part or something? So in January, we paid it.
The underpayment?
Yeah, the, of ten dollars and eighty-eight cents, she said I didn't include the tax or something.
Well, underpayment.
Yeah. We didn't include the tax in the.
But that's been taken care of since.
Oh, yeah, definitely, we have the checks here.
And what about the underreporting, has that been?
Yeah, that's been fixed, we have all this, if you wanna see it.
So, um, I started June fourth, last week Tuesday, um, I'm a certified public accountant, um, I have, the state of Hawaii issued my license in nineteen eighty-eight, I have a current active C P A license. And I would do my very best never to ever underpay or underreport going forward for Applebee's. So, I'm asking you if you would, um, waive the penalties.
Do you feel confident that this will not occur going forward?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, um, and I trust you have other things to do, than come here to try to explain the ten dollar and eighty cent violation, um. I'm gonna, um, my motion's gonna be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, but we're gonna suspend the, um, collection of that for one year, so long as this type of issue does not occur again.
Thank you very much.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-nine, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved, that fine will be suspended for a period of one year, provided another similar violation does not, uh, occur. If a similar violation does occur within that twelve-year, uh, twelve-month period, then the five hundred dollars plus any additional fines levied by this commission will be collectable. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling, uh, agenda item number thirty, Pandora's Cafe, Kalioki Bar and Grill, Mr. Green.
Mister Chairman, Commissioners, Arnold Green, authorized representative for W L C Corporation, to my right is Rilo, W I R L O, Angel, the President of the licensee.
Honor during the period ending June thirty, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to meet the requirement that at least thirty percent of its gross revenue come from food of, sale of foods in violation of Rule three eighty-two thirty-eight point twenty-two B of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How do you wish to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty?
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty, the no contest plea is accepted.
Um, this is a first violation, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars, and that licensee be directed to return in six months to report on its status if it wants to keep this class.
Yeah, we are, uh, currently open, gonna be opening for lunch to, uh, increase the business. In the neighborhood too, a lot of the restaurants within the, where it was located, right on the corner of Makalua and, uh, Ka'olokli Street, it closed. And, uh, we're, and, uh, we're looking at the business increasing because of, there was a, uh, Green Capaya and Oksengong Restaurant, and then the whole strip along there is now closed. There's no eating places in that little median area. So, uh, uh, we'll make every effort to get up to the thirty percent.
So prior to this, the lunch was not being served?
No, it was open, opened at six o'clock.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Ms. Neely, would you state your request for the record?
That a license be, licensee be directed to return in six months to report on its status.
Mm-hmm, okay, you just include that in the motion.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, uh, agenda item thirty, allowing a requirement that the licensee return six months to report on the status.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty, the, um, recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Sorry, can I make a clarification, six months from the date of the decision in order?
Yes, correct, yeah, okay, um, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, uh, is approved, and the licensee will appear before the commission, um, six months after the issuance of the decision in order to show, um, good cause that the gross liquor sales, uh, is being met.
I have requested the penalty be waived until we come back six months, if we meet the requirements, that the penalty be waived.
Uh, the violation has already occurred, so your client, at that particular time, should have come down and downgraded his license. And then this violation wouldn't have happened, or perhaps, as a business person, start opening up for lunch. We understand that, we know that area, we're familiar with that area, and we understand the construction that's going on in that area, and it may not be, uh, profitable for small businesses, but, um, you know, those is issues that you could have come and asked the commission to do, and the violation wouldn't have happened. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Calling agenda item number thirty-one, Bevy L L C. Ms. Otsiana?
Hello, Mister Chair, Members of the Commission, Ms. Otsiana, on behalf of the licensee, um, at this time, I'm going to request that this matter be continued, um, and I'm going to request a date, uh, either the second to the last or the last date in August if possible. Um, we do have a witness, but he is currently on the mainland for the summer, and we do not anticipate him being back in Hawaii until then.
The last week of August?
The last agenda meeting, I believe that might run on twenty-second? The last agenda meeting. I believe that might run on twenty-second.
Ms. Neely?
Um, I, I have no objection as to meeting on, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure of the date, but if that's a, um.
August twenty-second, is it Thursday?
Okay, I have no objection.
Ms. Oxianna, the witness will be available to attend on August twenty-second?
That is my hope. If I hear otherwise, I will inform the commission.
Okay. I think I heard you say the witness resides on the mainland?
Uh, he, he goes to school in Hawaii, but is on the mainland for the summer, because that's where he is originally from.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Uh, motion to continue, agenda item thirty-one, to August twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, I, agenda item number thirty-one is continued till August twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Right?
So, this is for contested hearing, right?
No.
Uh, well, we have not had that chance to get in contact with the witness yet, because he's on the mainland. So, we're hoping that when he gets back, we'll be able to contact him, at which time, I'm hoping to be able to let the corporation counsel know what direction the hearing will be headed. I'll try to let you know as soon as I possibly can.
Can you work with the prosecutor to inform her if she needs to have her witnesses available?
I will.
Right?
I will, thank you.
Okay. Calling agenda item number thirty-two, Best Market, Inc.
To my right is President Young Soo Little. She is president with counsel Wayne Luke. We waive reading on the charges. Enter plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty-two?
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, I, agenda item number thirty-two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Uh, this is a first violation of failure to file an updated floor plan within five days of condition alterations. I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
To, uh, first of all, first, when she, she, her premises on the Hawaii's treaty is, actually, her landlord is the city and county of Honolulu. So, two years, in twenty sixteen, they came to her and told her that they're taking a portion of the premises. And in, in reality, she didn't even think about notifying the commission about the reduction, because the city just came in and took the, the portion of her premises out. And going one step further, in this past April, the city took, did the whole thing and took her out. So, really, she doesn't have a premise or a license to the end. And that's basically our expedition. She didn't really, really think about the reduction, because the city just came in and took, took the premises back.
And so, today, there's no license establishment?
Her license was returned in May.
Okay. Well, Ms. Neely, any response to the representation?
Um, I, I don't have.
Okay, can, can we hear from, please, yes, we'll have somebody to verify this issue? So, Mr. Luke, for the record, you're representing that your client no longer has a license, and she has turned the license into the liquor commission? Okay.
She, she's breaking the.
That's for the record.
Yeah.
Do you know what's in the location currently?
The city is, that's, you know, where the neighborhood meets, Hawaii and River.
Yeah, Chicago.
Yeah, where they tried, they.
They tried, they tried to clean up the.
They're cleaning up the area.
They had to, or, they tried.
So, while we're waiting, let me ask this question. Who made the alteration?
Uh, basically, the city just.
Yeah, city.
City just came in and tore down the wall?
No, no, no.
Oh, no.
Just take over, that was a people, somebody else, but they take over this year.
When they made the changes?
Oh, that was a long time. Four years, four, five years ago.
That's two thousand and sixteen. The city just took over that space back.
I thought you stated for the record that the city was the landlord. So, if the city is the landlord, they have the right to do anything that they want?
Yeah, the city is a landlord, true. They have a subsidiary running, you know, running the, the whole block, you know, the whole Hawaii block.
Okay, yep. Supervising investigator Daniel Sato, the license was canceled voluntarily, April twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen.
Yeah, right, okay. Motion to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item thirty-two?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, I, agenda item number thirty-two, a letter of reprimand will be issued.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have any other business?
None.
Meeting is adjourned.